Good morning. I call this meeting to order on August 12th, 2015 at 10:01. At this time, I ask that you rise for a moment of silent meditation and then we'll pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll go back. Since I usually do this, since I didn't do it. Call to order, Eldon Callen.
Here.
Ed Hawkins.
Here.
Tom Bloom. Again, I want to welcome everyone here. This is a very positive, exciting day for all of us, and we'll get to that in a little bit. What we will now have is Diane, when she comes back in room, is going to do the consents and approvals and so on. There you are. Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome back on TV.
Okay, exonerations are 53 listings, $35,712.04 for tax years 2015, and replacement tickets for Comp and Robbins. The fiduciary orders as of August 12th. Valtterer's General County Fund, $365,562.17. General County Fund Purchasing Card, $7,496.30. Cole Severance Fund, $1,500. Chestnut Ridge Park, $2,068.58. Chestnut Ridge Park Purchasing Card, $311.71. Mason Dixon Park, $429.61. Mason Dixon Park Purchasing Card, $93. Assessor's Valuation Fund, $3,024.12. Assessor's Valuation Purchasing Card, $168.20. Magistrate Court Fund, $259.20. Magistrate Court Purchasing Card, $52.97. 911 Purchasing Card, $10,092.78. 911 Cash, $1,003.04. Morgantown Industrial Tiff, $4,461.90, for a total of $397,444.54.
Move for approval.
Second. It's been properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It passes. At this time, we have what's called comments from the public. Anyone who wishes to speak at this time, they are more than welcome to speak. They will stand. Please give your name, address, and we let you talk about anything you want. We now will open the public hearing. Is there anyone here from the public?
There's people here from the public, they don't want to speak.
Yeah, they don't want to speak. They're smart. Again, we'll close the meeting of the public portion. Okay, at this time, we will have Renetta talk about grants. Come on down, Renetta. And how are we doing today?
Good. I just have two contracts from the West Virginia Development Office for the Governor's Community Participation Grant Program. You have already approved the resolutions to sign the contracts, so I'm just presenting those for your signature today.
Move for approval.
Second. It's been properly moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, it passes. Okay, who will now sign it? In blue.
Thank you.
Yes, has to be in blue pen.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay, at this time, I'm very pleased to introduce Vivian. Please, I will let you speak, explain what's going on, and we'll turn it over to you, but we're very excited and thrilled about why you're here today.
Great, thank you. Thank you, county commissioners. We are excited about being here. The County Commissioners Association is an association of county government across the state, and we have a three-pronged mission. Our mission is REC, representation, education, and communications. We provide representation to county government at the state and federal levels with the state administrative offices and with the legislature. Excuse me. Under education, I'm going to skip that one for a moment, go to communication. We do a lot of different methods of communication to our county governments, both through social media, newsletters, meetings, networking. And then education, and that's why I'm here today, we provide educational opportunities for county government. We just finished up our annual conference, and we held it at the waterfront, a beautiful facility with a good attendance, and we've enjoyed our stay. And we're rounding it out with our awards for our county government essay contests. And so, Mon County, for the first time, this I think is our third or fourth year in doing the essay contest, it's one of our programs to try to educate the public about what county government does. And so each year, we hold an essay writing contest for eighth grade students, and the question is, what, how does my county commission make my life better? And that means they've got to kind of get involved and figure out what county government does. And in Mon County, the commissioners, you guys have done a yeoman's job of taking this on, and I know that many of you are already familiar with the program that Mon County Commission is doing, getting involved with the schools, getting involved with their own local contests, and becoming county commissioners for the day. And I was privileged to get to sit in on one of those, and that was absolutely fantastic. And because you are so involved in doing that, all three of our essay contest winners came from Montague County this year, so congratulations to all of you for that. They actually came from three different schools in Mon County. I'm going to start with our third place winner, and our third place winner of our contest, and there is a monetary award for the student who is the winner. And third place winner went to Malia Richardson. And Malia, if you would come on up, I believe you do. Beautiful young lady, and I believe you do have a copy of your essay, and if you wouldn't mind just turning around to the audience and reading it for them, you did an awesome job, and we'd love to hear it. Thanks.
The Montague County Commission is run by three commissioners, Ed Hawkins, Eldon Callen, and President Tom Bloom. It makes my community's life better and mine better by hosting amusing entertainment, donating to charities, and protecting citizens. They also help fund many organizations which help solve problems around the county and make life more enjoyable for everyone. One way they make my life better for me is the entertainment they put on or what they help pay for. Many parks like Marilla and Bo Park are funded by the commission. In the summer, I have two nice pools, playgrounds, ponds, trails, and other family fun activities which are there because of them. During the exciting night of the Fourth of July, they make the sky light up in colorful explosives. Theater productions such as ones at the Met are produced with money from them. If they didn't have the money, they couldn't make the plays and musical as wonderful as they are. I go to shows with my grandma, and if they couldn't do the plays, would have less time to spend with her. I also love to read, and the county commission makes it easier to get great books from the library. A way that doesn't affect me directly but warms my heart is the charities and shelters that they give to. When it comes to donations like these, even $1 counts. Places such as the Bartlett House is available for homeless people to live in until they can make their lives better and get jobs. The St. Ursula Food Pantry is an organization which helps feed the hungry, but without their help with that, many children and adults would go hungry every day. Another thing that is very uplifting is the animals' lives they make better with the Animal Friends Program. It saddens me when dogs and other animals don't get the necessary food, shelter, and love that they need, and the commission fixes that. One of the last things the commission, the county commission does is keep our communities in town safe. The volunteer fire department is one that I feel is greatly helpful. About a year ago, there was a fire which burnt down a whole apartment building in my neighboring house. It wasn't for the fire department, my house could have easily burnt down with it. My school had, has tragic events during my eighth grade year, and the sheriffs and deputies have been monitoring the halls to keep us safe. Even if nothing bad has happened since then, we are ready for anything else that might happen. We all feel safer and less worried in school. The Montague County Commission is important and helpful. They make life safer, more enjoyable, and are helpful. They offer protection and make our county a safer environment. Without them, we would sure miss them.
And that's exactly what we're looking for, Malia, when we're judging these contests. We want to know from the perspective of a 13-year-old eighth-grade student, what does county government mean to you and how does it touch you? And you did an excellent job with your essay. And so, we have for you a $150 monetary award and a certificate of our appreciation for your participation. Keep writing and keep learning. Thank you.
Malia, would you also say who's here for you and also the teacher and principal are also here, so?
My teacher that had me entered was here, Mr. Chris, my principal, Mr. Haney, and my grandma, Marie, and my mother.
Absolutely. Thank you for reminding me.
Oh, that's all right. And did either, since you are here and I know school's about to start, and I know you have to get back to the, would either of you like to speak, Mr. Chris, Mr. Haney, about?
About how wonderful she is.
She's turning bright red right now, you can't see her.
Yeah, she is. She was a wonderful student, very easy to teach, very, very bright, and she's going to grow up and be, you know, a very strong woman. And, you know, when I get old, I will feel really, really good if she's sitting in one of your chairs.
And that's part of our plan as well, yes. Thank you for the support of parents, grandparents, and teachers, principals. That's really important, and that's why we're seeing them excel so at doing this, because, you know, when you have a good support system behind you, thank you for reminding me that.
That's quite all right. Mr. Haney, did you want to say anything? Because it's rare that we can get the principals in with the teachers and the students, and we really appreciate you coming down.
Just to reiterate one, Mr. Chris, and the fact that I'm going to miss her, she's going on to the high school. I was curious to watch her the last three years, growing into such a fine young lady. Look forward to seeing her do even greater things later on in her life, so good luck to you.
Thank you very much.
Second place winner this year went to Nick Hurchopf. Did I get that right, Nick? Come on up. Nick is St. Francis Central Catholic School. And Nick, if you would, honor us by reading your essay, we would appreciate it.
This is how the county commissioner, county commission makes my life better. The county commission is responsible for many things that impact the citizens of West Virginia. Some of these include managing the taxpayers' money, handling the funding for our fire and sheriff's department, ensuring that the standards are met in our courthouse buildings, and implementing measures that provide the best experiences for the community to enjoy our parks and recreational areas. To me, as a teenager growing up in Morgantown, two of the most important things that the county commissioner provides me are the management of our funding of the 911 system and the supervision of our resources for our parks and recreation. The county commission helps implement the resources for our first responders to protect us. As I grew up in a single-parent home, I am grateful that I have the ability to call 911 if something should happen to my mother. This is crucial to the safety and the well-being of not only my family but the citizens of West Virginia. Sometimes a person may take this for granted, but I realize this is a valuable resource in place in order to save lives. It is also the county commissioner's position to ensure that the fire and sheriff's department are provided with adequate income to be able to support their families and so that they can remain in their position and to help our community. Today's world is unfortunately filled with crime and misconduct, and a person never really knows what will happen next. We'll go a little bit off-script here, but I learned this firsthand just the other day. My phone got stolen. I set my bag down, it was a cross-country practice, and my phone got stolen right off the rail trail, left it unattended for maybe an hour, and yeah, it got stolen, and my mom's holding my new one right there. That you're about to pay for.
No, I do, as commissioner.
Daily reports in the newspaper and television reveal the arrests of drug users and acts of, and other acts of wrongdoing. I look to our first responders to protect us from these issues, but the county commission is the unseen personnel that are the backbone of our protection. Managing all of the resources to protect the public is an enormous responsibility, and I am very appreciative of the county commissioners who take the time to make the difficult decisions which ultimately make my city a safer place. The county commission ultimately provides me with a sense of security, and I am able to rely on them for peace of mind and safety. Teenagers also need to experience, experience the outdoors and what West Virginia has to offer. With the increase in drug abuse among teens, it's, it is essential that there are recreational ev, oh, sorry.
Okay.
Recreational activities available. The county commission takes this responsibility seriously. They examine what facilities exist, they examine existing facilities, and solicit the opinions of the citizens to decide on how our parks should be handled. They hold public forums to determine additional needs in which may be addressed, and as I approach high school soon, I realize this can be a frightening time for many teens for many reasons. There are too many temptations for teenagers, but having engaging outdoor facilities can help the teens on the right path in life. In the event of a serious issue that would occur, I can depend on the 911 system for assistance. This is something that the county commission is dedicated to for the good of all kids my age.
Thank you. Tear me up there for a second. Having been a single mother, a single parent of two young men, your mama is doing a fine job and should be very proud of you as your teachers and your commission. We have, for your second-place winner, we have a check for $250 and a certificate for you. You just keep doing what you're doing and.
Sorry. You're doing a good job. And you would say you were with my mom and my grandma. And my principal is Mr. Moore, Mr. Arthur Moore, and my English teacher, who kind of made me do this.
Well, she did a good thing.
Ms. Linda Brandmeyer, so.
Oh.
Very good.
And now, unfortunately, I don't believe our first-place winner was able to be here. You know, we've never had the situation where we have one county win all three, and so we were trying to coordinate. It's why it took us so long, and we apologize for how long it's taken, but we were trying to coordinate three family schedules with teacher schedules and commission meeting schedules and our schedules. So, we really do appreciate you making the effort to be here. Our first-place winner was Mr. Mason Shockley from Mountaineer Middle School. And if we can't get a meeting set up to present Mason, we are going to go ahead and mail this to him because we know a new school year is starting, so.
We'll find him some.
You'll find him. And Mason's teachers, because the first-place winner's teachers also get a $300 award for their school, and we want to keep teachers, you know, promoting this within the eighth grade. And his teachers were, and I'm getting old and need glasses here, Joella Groves and Kimberly Fowler. So, we're sorry they couldn't be with us today, but we will make sure that they get there.
I don't know how we're going to outdo this next year, because last year, we had two winners. This year, we have three. How are we going to get four?
We may have to add another place.
That's right.
Congratulations to all of you. Keep doing your good work, and thank you guys for participating.
Thank you very much.
Not only will you have pictures, but you also have forever for life.
Do you want to have all the pictures?
On YouTube. Yeah, what we're going to ask, Vivian, if you could come up here and the two winners, we'd like to have a picture of all, and then I'm also going to ask if Megan, you would also take a picture, so. Jenny, could you? Two, Megan.
If you need mine, I can.
Put the one up here. We'll let you up in the.
Yeah.
Which state winners are you getting up here?
These may be the folks who end up filling these seats.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Very much. Congratulations. Appreciate you coming in a couple days before school.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Again, Vivian, Megan, we are honored that you did this, and as you can tell, Mon County has really gotten into it. As you said, locally, we then allow them, not only do they also get awards, but they also work, take each of our seat and go through.
That's what you mentioned, county commissioners for a day.
For a day, and it really, and it is really neat that, to do that, and I'm really amazed how much, when they go back, how much the parents come up and say, I didn't realize you all did this. So, it really, it's a great way, yeah.
That is exactly our purpose. And one thing I failed to mention.
Sure.
Your YouTube from last year was forwarded on to our National Association of Counties. They have a National County Government Week in April, and we tweeted it out to them, and they picked up on it and retweeted it, so.
Oh, wow. Okay.
Yeah, absolutely, yes.
Well, we thank you very much. We're really pleased, and also was very informed, and want to appreciate you putting on the program, and we would love to have you back anytime, and I don't know what you did about the food, but that was amazing. Now, I want to tell you, that was, I gained five extra pounds. I think that was the complaint.
I'm worried about weighing.
Yes, but we want to thank you very much, and we hope to see you on September 15th, as we said, at 1:30, when we're going to have the grand opening of the judicial building.
Okay.
Okay, well, we won't hold you anymore. I know you have to get back. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, Jamie, come on down. This is Jamie Summerlin about the Morgantown Marathon. You don't mind if you speak early?
No.
You could sit, whatever, it's more comfortable.
Stand if it's okay.
That's fine.
Approach the commission.
Oh, yeah, sure. Yeah, we're not lawyers. We're not, yeah.
I just wanted to give you a warning.
Yeah, thank you. President Callen?
Thank you. Speak for yourself.
That's right. That's right. I'm sorry. I didn't think of that.
Yeah, if you don't mind, I'm not much of a sitter, so.
No, go ahead.
Absolutely, stand, whatever.
I wanted to come in this morning to discuss a little bit about our event that we have coming up here in September. We are five weeks away, 37 days from kickoff of this inaugural event. As the commission knows, this has been a dream of mine. I'll introduce myself, obviously, Jamie Summerlin, who ran across America three years ago, supporting our veterans, continuing to do work here in our community and statewide to support our veteran population. As everybody knows, per capita, we have the most veterans of any state in the nation, and I think it speaks to two things. One, we have a long history of service in this state, and two, a lot of veterans come back home, and we want to make a difference when we come back here. And so, that's what started me on my journey five years ago, as I started dreaming about doing the run, and then a couple of years ago, came up with this vision of putting on an event here in Morgantown that I thought we so dearly needed. I got tired of traveling all over the country and running races all over the area and not being able to have something right here in our backyard. Go back four years ago, when I had the dream of running across the country, I had a lot of folks that told me I'd never do it because I just ran my first marathon a year earlier, and we accomplished it. Two years ago, I had people tell me that we'd never see a marathon in Morgantown because we'd never get the support. It's too hilly, just a lot of challenges that we had to overcome. And here we are, five weeks away from putting on the inaugural event. It is certainly a thankful job for us to be able to do here in the community, to bring things like this here, and we know that it couldn't be done without the support of folks like the commission and other entities that are here. As I, as you well know, I'm very heavily involved at Operation Welcome Home, our veterans facility here in Morgantown. The commission has stepped up and supported that organization to the tune where, over the past two months, we put 16 veterans back to full-time jobs, almost 100 veterans in the past three years to full-time jobs here in our local community, and we do that with one full-time employee and a volunteer board that's really working hard and tirelessly to make that happen. The commission has stepped up and helped us achieve those goals, and we truly appreciate it. Two years ago, like I said, I had this dream and this vision. Here we are, five weeks away, and with folks like yourselves who have put me in touch with the right people. I still remember two years ago, when I came to you gentlemen, and I said, I've got this vision of wanting to do this and putting this event on, and there was no hesitation. I've received tremendous support from the community, from the state. We are obviously continuing to work through, you know, hurdles and challenges for putting on the event for the first time. One of the things that we realized was we don't have a Morgantown Marathon folder to pull out and say, here's how we do it. So, it's a first-time event, and we've got a lot of hurdles to overcome, but we've been able to do that, and it's been wonderful to see this thing grow. As you can tell on the final page of the packet that I gave you, you know, we've got a full weekend of events happening, but this has grown larger than what we originally dreamed and expected, and we're hoping that this will continue to be not only a great first-year event, but an inaugural, an event that will grow into an annual event that continues to grow larger and larger over the next few years and becomes a cornerstone of events right here in the Morgantown area. We have almost 850 registrants as of today. We have 33 states and five countries represented, as far away as Australia. We have stateside as far away as Hawaii coming here to run the race. I've got WVU grads who haven't been back to Morgantown in 20 years, who are coming back here with their family to stay that weekend and participate in the event. We wanted to make this a West Virginia thing. Jamie Lester, who you know designed the West Virginia State Quarter, our Jerry West statue in front of the Coliseum, he also designed the medal for our race. And every finisher, depending on the distance you do, will receive a finisher's medal that has a lot of great architecture here in the city, that people will walk away and remember their time here in Morgantown. Not only the fact that it's a challenging course, but the fact that they'll have something that they can look at and remember. And we did something a little unique. We actually are working to provide every runner with a West Virginia State Quarter that Jamie designed, and then on the medal, whenever they get the finisher's medal, there's a spot on the medal for you to actually stick the quarter into. So, it kind of completes the mission whenever they come in. We are promoting the entire region for the weekend. This has been a two-year process of really working together with entities in the area. I had a chance to go to the Pittsburgh Expo back in March, or May, I'm sorry, and talk to folks up there about our race, and a lot of folks were like, I ain't running a marathon in Morgantown. It's going to be tough. And I said, well, come down and run the AK, because we're providing events for everyone at every level of fitness to participate in. I said, come down and do the AK, get off the shuttle at Triple S, do the chicken wing cook-off that afternoon, stay overnight, cheer the runners on the next morning, and then go down to the Wine and Jazz Festival that afternoon. And I'm like, hey, we can make it a weekend event. I said, absolutely. That's what we're really trying to promote. We have a Health and Wellness Expo at Mile and Park that's going on, that we're bringing not only running organizations into, but we're providing health and wellness professionals and organizations in our local community to be a part of it, to showcase the opportunities right here in our backyard of health and wellness in the state of West Virginia and right here in Morgantown. So, we're real excited about that event and wanting to see it grow as well. As you can tell, we've got a lot of great sponsors that have stepped up. The Greater Morgantown CBB stepped up right off the bat and became our title sponsor for the full marathon. WVU Medicine is our title sponsor for our half marathon, which we're calling our Thirteen-er. It's got its own unique name, so we have our Mountain Mama AK Race, we have our inaugural mile, which I absolutely would love to see the commission at and participate. It's a walk, jog, run, whatever you want to do, but it gives everybody in the community a chance to do the first mile of the entire course and go through the start-finish line at the Coliseum, which we're real excited about. WVU stepped up after we did our presentation to them, and they jumped right on board and said, we want to be a part of this as well. So, the support we received, not only from our elected officials and our community, but the university as well, has been a great thing. I know at the end of the day, not everybody's going to sit down and hold hands and sing kumbaya. There's always challenges and things in our community, but, but if we can start building some bridges and put events on like this, it shows we can work together, and we can make something pretty special happen here in Morgantown. As you can tell, that long list of sponsors that we have involved that have all stepped up to help make this thing happen. Advantage Health and Wellness is our primary sponsor for the Health and Wellness Expo. University Motors is our pace car sponsor. We'll have a nice Mercedes rolling in front of our full marathon for the race that day, and their three-wheeled Morgan they'll have actually in front of the AK, so we're excited about that. Of course, media sponsors, health and wellness professionals in the area, mile marker sponsors, water station sponsors. It's going to take a community effort to pull this event off. I use Richmond as a great example of a tremendous race that's labeled as America's friendliest marathon. They have about 25,000 runners that participate in that event every year. You cannot run a block without people being out on the street, cheering them on, sitting in their chairs, playing music, passing out water, food, whatever. It is a tremendous event and a great venue down there. We want to replicate that. We'll never be at a 25,000-person race. Logistically, we just can't handle it, but we want it to be a special, unique place that when people come to visit us here in West Virginia, they walk away with a completely different idea of who we are and the special people that we have. I had a gentleman from Austin, Texas email me, and he said, I've never been to West Virginia, let alone Morgantown. Tell me which hotel is closest to your breweries. I emailed him back.
I have a couple.
30 minutes, 30 minutes later, he emailed me, he said, I just registered for the race and got my hotel reservation set up. "I've never been to West Virginia, let alone Morgantown. Tell me which hotels closest to your breweries." I emailed him back.
I have a couple.
Thirty minutes, thirty minutes later, he emailed me, he said, "I just registered for the race and got my hotel reservation set up. I'll see you in September." So, we're bringing people here to our community that would never otherwise come to West Virginia, and we want them to walk away with something very special and unique in mind. We've worked with, as I said, WVU, law enforcement, Department of Highways. That's going to be a continual challenge because of the logistics of the race, but they've been over backwards to help city, county, state officials to make this happen. One of the big challenges that we have, and the reason that I wanted to come speak to the commission today, is it's not a cheap endeavor to put the event on, as you well know. We started with zero dollars, just a vision and an idea of this event over a year and a half ago, and a lot of people have stepped up to help us out. We knew what our budget was going to be based on other races. We talked to a ton of other race directors, from Kalamazoo to Pittsburgh to Richmond, to talk to them, races far larger than ours and races that are about our size, just to kind of get an idea of what it was going to take for us to pull this together. We're real excited for the sponsors that have stepped up. We knew our top budget item in our event was going to be law enforcement. Because of the logistics of the race, based on everyone that we had talked to, it is always everyone's top-budget-dollar item for their races, because it takes a large effort to bring law enforcement in, to handle traffic control, to make sure, for me, number one, my runners are safe. That's my first and foremost concern. I understand we're putting the community out, even if it's just for a few hours on a Sunday morning for the long marathon, but the opportunity to showcase what we have right here in our backyard that we take for granted so often, I feel is far greater, and an opportunity for us to be able to bring law enforcement that have stepped up from Bridgeport to Wheeling and all points in between to help us put this event on. They've really come to the plate to make this thing happen, state police, county, the sheriff, and the city. It's going to take about seventy-five law enforcement personnel to put the event on. That's just at our tier-one, what we've called our tier-one intersections, where there's a red light, where there's a major intersection, four-way stops, things like that, to be able to handle traffic control for the full marathon. The other fifty intersections that we've identified, so we're, you know, at a hundred-and-thirty or so intersections that they need to maintain, those will be handled by our tier-two support, which we've got the West Virginia National Guard that are working to put numbers together, ROTC at WVU. We've got Hogs and Heroes that are used to doing military rides and support there that are stepping up to help out. We've brought in the local ham radio folks to help with communications, EMTs, all those folks, but, you know, our biggest expense we knew going into it was going to be our law enforcement. So, what we wanted to do was get everything coordinated, find out what our numbers were going to be, and then sit down and figure out where we could get the support to be able to help that out. Just so you're aware, a quarter of our budget for the entire marathon goes to law enforcement personnel. So, every dollar we, for every four dollars we spend, one of those dollars goes to law enforcement. We want to take care of them. I'm not expecting them to come in and do this event for free because it's a long event. It really is, and it puts them out. We're sandwiching this in between three home football games and another home football game. So, you've got the three home games, a week off that they would have had, basically, and then another home football game. So, they're stepping up. They've not complained about it one bit, but I want to make sure we're taking care of them. With that being said, for us to be able to help support them, we're really looking to get support from those that are helping us understand the return on investment, and I'll share with you just the numbers. For every thousand runners that come into a community, because they bring, on an average, three warm bodies with them, it's about a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar local economic impact to the community. While it's not football money, it's still a nice shot in the arm to us, almost like a, you know, a half-sold-out football game, if you will, for what we would bring in. So, what we're trying to do is, again, grow this into a much larger event, but this year, really seeking the support that we can get from the commission and others to make that happen. It's a great event for our community. It's a great event for our city, for the county, for the state of West Virginia, and again, it's something that we're really, really excited to bring to the community. We wanted to make a request, and I'm sure the formal process to make all that happen, but for us, talking to the committee and what we wanted to do, if we could get any financial support from the commission to help make this happen, it would take off a load for us to be able to help cover our law enforcement costs, but then, in the end, also turn around because at the end of the day for this race, all the proceeds that we raise are staying right here in our local community to support Operation Welcome Home. We want to be able to donate as much as we possibly can to that organization to help serve those veterans, but it also requires us to take care of those that are helping us put this event on. We had discussed it, you know, if there's any possible way the commission, for us, a five-thousand-dollar, you know, support requirement for us, you know, to be able to help pay for the law enforcement, which is still just a small portion of what we've got to pay, would be a great benefit to us to be able to help these law enforcement personnel. So, whatever formal process I need to go through to make that happen, I certainly want to do. I just wanted to at least put that out, so.
I'm having a senior moment. I talked to a friend of mine who was talking to you from KAM, who was here for the County Commissioners Association, and I'm having a senior moment. I can't remember names for some reason this morning. Anyway, he, he was, you know who I'm talking about? He's with KAM. Anyway, he said he was going to come over and talk to you yesterday, so I can't remember. Anyway, he was very positive, and he's from Charleston, I believe.
Okay.
And he was very positive about what's going on in the marathon and the active participation in the rest part of the state here, and the excitement in the rest of the part of the state, so that was one thing. Your two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, and I always talk about return on investment every time, every time an issue comes up. That's for a single race, but if you can get him to come here and stay over the weekend. And again, I'm having that senior moment. Who's the economic guy that I talk with all the time for WVU?
Deskins.
That's Charles.
Charles Deskins.
Charles John.
John Deskins.
John, John Deskins. Thank you. Boy, yeah. John Deskins did an economic impact study, and you might ask him to do that on the Mountain Fest, and he can do a post-study, which actually would probably increase your numbers, especially if, like you say, you can stay through the weekend.
Yes, sir.
Let me, we, we have funds in our hotel motel tax. That's what I was asking. Is it all, is it all allocated? Do we have any discretionary funds in that?
There's nothing in the other line item that I can do budget revision. Take some contingencies.
That's what I was saying, a contingency fund, put it in economic development. I'd move that we give five-thousand dollars to the Montague County Marathon, I'm going to call it.
Now, I don't know if you know it or not, but I actually own a Morgan that is currently being re-restored, so I will offer up my Morgan, hopefully, in next year to be a replacement for the trike.
I will take you up on that offer.
Thank you, and I will happily second that motion.
It's been properly moved in second to support five-thousand dollars from contingency fund for the marathon. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes three-oh, and we also think, this is, I mean, there's a lot of buzz about this, and from also what I read in your article that you were interviewed, you're going through every ward of the city of Morgantown also. So, you're, so it isn't just, it's more unique than just a regular marathon, is that correct?
That is correct. We had the gentleman who did the Boston certification, that we're getting that all certified right now, finalizing that. We had talked about the difficulty of the course. It's not your typical flat marathon, and I've got a lot of folks, and our tagline for the race is twenty-six-point-two almost-heavenly miles. I wanted to keep that West Virginia connection, but it is, it's not heavenly, it's almost heavenly. There's a couple of spots, they're not going to be happy with me on, but I've got people that have written to me and said, "Almost heaven equals not flat." They're excited about it.
When they get to the top of the hill, they'll be close.
Absolutely. But we wanted to make sure that we represented Morgantown as a whole, and that's why the design was done to represent all seven wards of the city. It does take everyone through all seven wards. We do start and end at the Coliseum. There's no way to get back to the Coliseum in any direction without going uphill, so we have our own version of Heartbreak Hill at the end, but it's going to be a great, unique experience for those that come in, and we're real excited to see it grow over the years. There are going to be folks that will never want to come back and run the race again because it's just that challenging, but that's the unique part about it, and how we're really going to sell it is that it does go through the wards. It does present a diverse path throughout the entire course, and so, we're real excited about that and the folks that have joined us to support it. I'm certainly grateful for the commission for stepping up today to help us make this happen. It's going to enable us not only to put on a safe race, which is first and foremost to me, but at the end of the day, to be able to support a great organization, and again, every dime we raise stays right here in our local community. It's not another group coming in, putting a race on, and leaving with the profits. We wanted to promote and support West Virginia, and that's what we're doing, so.
That's great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you, commission.
We're at correspondence requisition for payment number fourteen.
Hey, this is two, and all this is John in Triad Engineering. Thing out is one-hundred-and-thirty-eight-thousand-eight-hundred-nine dollars and forty cents.
Move for approval.
Second.
Been properly moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. GIS Certification Institute notice.
Okay, I'm glad Mike is here.
Yes.
This is a letter to the commission. It says, "Congratulations. On August four, Michael Paul was certified by the GIS Certification Institute as a Certified Geographic Information Systems Professional. This letter is intended to provide background information on the GISCI certification process and how it can help enhance your employer-employee relationship." So, I just wanted to put that into the record, that Mike's doing a good job, and we were notified of this, and I just wanted to pass on.
And pass on the commission's congratulations to you, Mike. Very good.
Thank you. Yes, he certainly has been. Having worked with the planning commission for some time, he certainly has been a great addition to that particular entity.
Any other correspondence? Okay, now we go to unfinished business, discussion and adoption of the personnel policies and procedures. And did you want to just, I was going to ask Renetta to come out because Renetta's been.
This has been her project.
Yes, and do you want to just give a quick Cliff Notes version of what we asked you to do and what we came up with and what we're, and how it was proposed to the other departments, and then, how we're here now?
Well, we had a work session back in January to discuss adopting personnel policies and procedures because the, our insurance carrier said that because we didn't have one, they were going to raise our deductible. So, we met with all the elected officials in January, discussed what we were going to do. We borrowed a copy from Lewis County. They were gracious enough to lend us there, so we could sort of use it as a template. It was very thorough. We used a lot of it, and so, we have put together a draft. It was sent out to all the elected officials, asking for their comments. We had a work session last week to discuss the few comments that they had. We made corrections, and now we're ready for it.
Is there a motion on the floor?
I would move that we adopt the personnel policies that's presented and as participated in by the other elected officials.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second. Did anyone want to discuss this, since this is a major?
Well, I.
Positive.
They've, what, they've raised our deductible twice. Each year. Pretty soon, our insurance would be that if we have, if we have a personnel issue, we'll have to write them a check instead of the insurance covering us. I mean, it's getting to the point that the deductible, and we can't do without insurance. And this, these personnel policies and procedures for public distribution basically are general, general procedures that any responsible organization, be it government, nonprofit, profit organization, should follow. I mean, it's basically legal standards. Many of it's legal standards, everything from FMLA to, to no sexual harassment, prohibitions, drug prohibitions, all, the majority of which are legal aspects that any responsible employer would follow. So, to adopt that is, is no, should be no great, and Mark might want to speak this because he was actively participating in this as well, that any elected official or person that runs an organization would want to follow. I would also point out, these personnel policies do not in any way change, modify, or create, or create a, change or modify the at-will employment status of all the employees, or create any type of contract with the employees. It's merely standards that, that all employees of the county should be able to rely upon, as well as the managers and the elected officials in the county to rely on. And if the commission doesn't object, I'd like, Mark, because I think a couple of things I said he wanted to add into.
No, I think it was very standard for what we went over, and from my background coming in, it's pretty consistent. I like the idea of having one that's universal. We have our own within our office, and it was pretty well-standard here because of Renetta, we started this in January, we just ended the stuff that we had, and we started plugging it together and adopting the one that you already see, so, yeah. I'm delighted that we have something like that that's equal around for anybody new coming in and for those that are currently employed here.
Thank you. Eddie, do you want to say anything? I do want to also put a shout out because Bill Bartola had started the idea. He had been really interested in this, so I know that Bill, after we have a vote, will be very pleased. So, and again, and I do want to thank Renetta for all the work that you were able to do and accomplish, and I think it's just one more thing that this county commission is doing behind the scenes to uniform and make things more accountable in our county.
It's a lot of work, too.
Yeah, it was a lot, yes.
It's a lot of work to do.
Yes.
But, but that's what they like this for.
At this time, have a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. We now have personnel policies and procedures. Fantastic. Yes. Okay, let's see. We have signage for Arnetsville Farmers Market.
I would like to move that we accept a bid, if you will, for four signs for the Arnetsville Market. It would be four-hundred-and-eighty dollars plus six percent tax. The reason for this is we have really vested in small communities our support, and this small community here in Arnetsville is trying very hard with its community building and other things to make sure that it stays a community. I come from Easton. Easton used to be a community. It doesn't exist anymore, and I miss that spirit. So, when, when I saw that the farmer's market was there, I asked if there was anything that commission might be able to enable or help them, and they asked for signage so that on Route nineteen, as you go by, you would have four signs instructing people that there is a farmer's market, thus getting more farmers there and getting more people there.
I would second that, and without repeating it, echo that I agree totally with Commissioner Hawkins in our need to support the communities and be able to keep their community identity, so this is one small step we can stake to do that.
It's been properly moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Fantastic, that passes. Is there any other unfinished business? Seeing none, we'll move to new business, setting pre-bid and bid opening dates for repairs to that wall on the PRT lot.
This is down the PRT parking lot. It's starting to fall. We're responsible for it. I'd like to set September the first at ten.
We can't shift it to the city. Now, I can hear, I can hear me being chewed out at the city council meeting, but can't you?
Have to say something.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's September first, ten o'clock pre-bid, September nine, ten fifteen bid opening.
Move to set those dates.
Second.
It's been properly moved in second for pre-bid and bid dates. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It passes. Okay, GIS contract with ESRI for mapping. Did you want to do just a?
Have him come on down.
Come on down and just do a Cliff Notes version, because I know no one's going to understand the larger version.
Absolutely. So, the contract, the three-year agreement that is in front of you right now is for total county-wide software for every county agency. We spoke on it about it last week. Twenty-thousand dollars is every single type of license, unlimited amount of licenses for every agency in the county that's going to be using that, the assessor's office, the planning office, and MECA 911. With that, we don't have to pay a yearly maintenance fee for each individual agency. So, with working with the small government program with Esri, we found out that the twenty-thousand dollars a year for three years is probably the best way to do it. So, saving money, it includes all the maintenance, includes all the software, and a limited amount of uses.
Move to approve contract.
I really heartily second this because, having worked with Mike and seeing what phenomenal things that you can do with this mapping is very, very exciting. I'd like you also to mention where our support comes, from Blue Mountain.
Yep, Blue Mountain.
Okay, that's outside of Wage Town, a local firm that's also providing our support.
Right, absolutely. So, I think you have a second letter for that, possibly? Yeah. It's the second letter is for the purchase of the 2015 ortho-photography for Montague County, which is through Blue Mountain. Blue Mountain is, like Commissioner Hawkins said, a local agent, or a local firm out of the western end of the county that a lot of people don't know about, but it's in our backyard. It's good to take advantage of the uses that they have and what they can do for us as a county. So, what we're looking at is purchasing the most recent imagery for our mapping program here in Montague County. That imagery is, it's four-inch imagery. I know that might sound kind of obtuse, really, but at the same time, four-inch imagery gives you even better imagery than Google Earth does. So, what we can do is with the assessor's office, we'll be able to accurately map the parcel data, 911 data. Even with west-run zoning, they'll be able to properly identify different parcels and changes in the area. So, we're looking at a cost of eighteen-thousand-five-hundred for the entirety imagery of, for Montague County, so that's my request to you to take.
Okay, so we have a motion first for the twenty thousand, so it's been properly moved in second. All those in favor for the first motion, say aye.
Aye.
It passes. The second motion then would be for the eighteen thousand for this company, correct?
That's correct.
So moved.
Second.
Been properly moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Eventually, we'll be able to resell this to utilities and.
That's correct. Yeah, it'll be a return on investment. That'll be something that the county commission and the assessor's office needs to work with each other about. Now, there's plenty of gas companies and coal companies out there looking for that parcel data or that updated imagery so they can do their work too. So that's something we need to establish.
Yeah, we'll be, we'll be reaching out to the other entities as we discussed as well in terms of, you know, Mub, Bow Park, the cities, the localities, a number of these different that, that we can expand, but this is just sort of the first step.
Looking forward to this evening with the city-county meeting. I made a really good presentation, board of different maps of what we can do here in Montague County.
Of what we can go to.
Exactly.
Great.
And what we can do with that type of software and that type of mapping.
Great, good.
Citing investment.
Well, thank you very much. We will see you this evening.
And Mark also is coming.
Oh, good. So they've both been coming for this evening for the public who doesn't understand what you just said. We have the city-county meeting tonight and we're going to explain, you know, all the benefits from it and hopefully they will be a part of.
How they can become a part of it.
Part of it. Or they're going to buy it.
Or pay for it.
Pay for it later.
It also means that Mike doesn't have to attend the planning commission tonight.
Yes, that's right.
Also this evening.
Yes. Okay. Thank you very much.
We will.
Okay. To consider adoption now by the county commission of a resolution which would approve the holding of a public hearing regarding the proposed approval by the county commission of a new project plan to be known as Project Plan Number Two, Maple Drive Improvement Project for the existing Montague County Development District Number Three. Tom, if you wanted to come down and explain, and again, the key difference being the words "new" and "existing".
Yes.
That's the difference. Yes.
So the county commission has already created a property tax increment development district in the area of Mont General Hospital. And it include, it goes back all the way to the research park behind the hospital and is bordered all the way behind and not on the residential side, but on the opposite side by 705, by the, by the research park. And then by 705 to the front of the hospital and then the residential area on the other side. And initially, the, the first project plan provided for the improvement, or actually the construction of Mont General Boulevard, Mont General Drive, which is a new access road up to the hospital, which has been completed. The commission issued bonds for that project. So those bonds are in a repayment mode, replaced with Mont General Hospital. So essentially, it was set up as a reimbursement to them for the costs incurred to construct that road. Project is completed. New project, Mont General Hospital is in the process of building three medical office buildings over on the corner of Maple Drive and this new TIF road, which is Mont General Drive. And I understand those buildings will be completed, or anticipated to be completed sometime by the end of this year. In order to avoid creating additional tra, in order to help alleviate some of the traffic from the intersection of the new TIF road and 705, anticipate that Maple Drive could be improved to help take some of the pressure off that intersection and roadway. I don't know if you, I'm sure you've all probably been over there on Maple Drive. The road is sort of narrow in certain areas and is not really in very good condition. There are some existing businesses over there. So in order to bring that road up to the level or standard that would be beneficial to that area and those businesses and also provide an additional entry and access point to that, that whole area, it's proposed to improve that road, basically regrade it, relocate the utilities, vary the utilities to the extent that the budget would permit that. New surface for the road, sidewalks, widening where the right-of-way would permit that to be done. The Mont General Hospital has engaged a CTL engineering firm to do the planning and design work for the project. They have prepared an initial budget for that. I had originally come to the commission about this time last year, just giving an overview of the project. Since that time, they've been trying to value engineer to bring some of the cost down to what the TIF can support because I think some of the utility relocation and bearing costs were higher than what was anticipated, or at least budgeted to be so. So at this point, the hospital feels as though they're ready to go ahead and present the plan. It's the new project plan for Maple Drive improvements. Piper Jaffray, the placement agent, has prepared some modeling as far as the available TIF revenues. And the modeling would support repayment of the existing TIF bonds, approximately in a total of $8 million for the Maple Drive improvements. And there's a map in here as to what those, you know, where those improvements are located within the district, what that road looks like now in the surrounding area. And there's a budget for the project, which is about $9 million plus, but that's a little bit of an older budget. Like I said, they're trying to value engineer that to bring the cost within line with what the TIF could support to the extent possible. At this stage, as far as the procedure, the commission is just being asked to adopt a resolution which would set a public hearing date, which is the first step in the process and the advert, you know, the publication of a legal ad for that public hearing. And also the sending of letters to the Board of Education and the Development Office providing notice to that public hearing and publishing a legal ad. So that, the resolution that you have would provide those approvals. The, the public hearing date would be August 26th at 10 o'clock AM here at the county commission meeting room. And at that time, you could open the public hearing and considering comments that the public may have as to this project and new project plan.
And for clarification, you had come before us several months ago for, just when we discussed it. So it isn't that this is new to us, that you said that this would be coming.
Correct.
So I just want the public to know that we have been discussing this and now.
Well, the, the, the concept.
The concept.
But, but we just got the.
Right.
I don't want, because I've got a couple of things I've got to bring up here.
Okay.
We, we just got the actual application.
Right, the concept is.
But the concept is in here.
Yeah, so the, this binder is the new project plan and application to the West Virginia Development Office for their approval of project number, plan, project plan number two for the district.
Right.
This is the first time you've seen this. We're placing these of record with the county commission and the notice of public hearing will indicate that anyone from the public can come to the commission office and look at these application binders and develop any questions that they may have and raise those at the public hearing, if there are any. And also gives you all the opportunity to review this prior to that meeting for the public hearing because you'll be asked at that time to take official action to approve submitting the application to the development office for consideration of approval.
Okay.
I have one question. Although this says 10 AM, is it appropriate that we have it at 10:15 or should you change the batch to 10:15?
Is that the time that you'd like to set?
10 o'clock is when we start.
We have been.
10:15.
We could, certainly leaving it at 10, people could get here a little bit earlier.
Right, okay. Then we could just change.
Can't be, can't be early, but it's all right to be a little bit early.
Okay.
So if it's 10:05, we'd have to wait till 15.
That's right.
A couple of things I need to, need to point out. I've got a bunch of different hats and this is, this is the.
And I represent the county commission on this. I do not represent Mont General Hospital.
Right, right. The issue from the MPO, the MM, MM, MMPO, Morgantown, Montague, Metropolitan Plan Organization. One of the, one of the things that they were, the issues that the advisory committee brought up with me as vice president of that organization was the need to make this a complete street as part of their, their plan, MMPO. I see here and from the letter, from the DOH, that of course, the improvement of this road, which is actually, they cited as County Route 61-5. All right, I didn't see, they didn't cite, they didn't cite the number, but anyway, it's county rates, according to the Department of Highways, it's County Route 61 dash slash five, Maple Drive, that they, they intend to use no West Virginia Department of Highways monies, that it would come from the TIF or other sources. One of, one of the things that we may want to look at in here, and I want to bring it up now before the public hearing because I know they want to move on this, is see if we couldn't get some matching funds for this complete streets concept and how that would affect that. But I know it's, it, it's, it's really their project that they, that they need to, to work on, but I bring that up because I expect that to be an issue in the public hearing.
Do you know what the complete streets would provide for or require?
Well, it provides both for, for bicycle, bicycle access, pedestrian access, which is kind of included in the description, but it's not, it's not comple, it doesn't totally cover, doesn't totally cover here when it says.
If MPO could provide some sort of description of the complete streets concept to me, I could get that to the hospital and their engineer.
Okay.
And see if what they're proposing may already be included, you know.
Okay.
Maybe it's a complete street as designed, but if not, to see what avenues might be available to make that happen.
Yeah. And I'll be talking in my report about some, some other things, about the getting, getting more federal money to support the complete street thing, but I thought this would be a good opportunity. Can you make a note of that, Diane, to get ahold of Bill Austin, to get him to get to Tom, the complete streets information? Thank you. Okay, that was, that, that was the, the one, one issue. When, when is the, what I couldn't see here, it might be in here. When's the plan build out date on this? What, when do they plan to perform this?
They're planning to go out to bid and open bids and be ready for construction, basically for the, the spring construction season.
So starting next year, 2016. Okay. All right, I, I'm sure there will be more issues after I read everything.
Sure.
And I'm sure there will be more, I, I expect some participation in this. I, I, you know, a lot of times we put these things out and no one shows up.
Right.
But I kind of expect this Maple Drive thing to have some participation and public input, so. So that, that's what I saw right off the bat, Tom. Thank you.
Okay. Ed, did you have any?
I think anytime we're getting road improvements in Montague County, it is a blessed day.
Yeah.
Okay, so what we need now is move for adoption of.
Well, have, just have Diane read the resolution, then we'll pass the resolution.
Okay.
And then authorize you to sign it and that will be done.
Okay.
Okay. Whereas the county commission of Montague County, West Virginia, the county commission is authorized by the West Virginia Tax Increment Financing Act, Chapter Seven, Article 11B of the Code of West Virginia, 1931, as amended, to create tax increment financing districts, approve project plans, issue tax increment financing obligations, and take such other actions as necessary or desirable to facilitate the orderly development and economic stability of Montague County, West Virginia. All is more fully set forth in the act. Whereas the county commission has received and reviewed the tax increment financing application dated August 3, 2015, proposed by Montague County General Hospital Company relating to the approval of a new project plan designed as Project Plan Number Two, Maple Drive Improvement Project for the existing development district in Montague County known and designated as Montague County Development District Number Three. Whereas the developer has requested that the county commission, under and pursuant to the act, hold a public hearing at which interested parties be afforded a reasonable opportunity to express their views on the proposed approval by the county commission of Project Plan Number Two. Now therefore be resolved by the county commission of Montague County, West Virginia, as follows. It is hereby found and determined subject to a public hearing and other required actions that the county commission will consider for approval of the application for the approval of the project plan, and if approved, submit the application to the West Virginia Development Office for consideration and obtain all other necessary approvals. The county commission hereby sets a public hearing regarding the application for Wednesday, August 26th, 2015 at 10 AM. The county commission hereby approves the publication under and in accordance with the applicable provision of the act that certain notice of public hearing substantially in the form attached here to is Exhibit A, Incorporated Hearing by Reference. This resolution is effective immediately upon adoption adopted this 12th day of August 2015.
Move to approve the resolution and authorize the president to sign the same.
Second. Been properly moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It passes?
Oh, you got it. Yeah, thank you, yes. Okay, very good. I'll go ahead and take these letters then and send out copies of the public hearing notice to the board of that and to the development office and we'll move forward then with the public hearing on 26th.
Okay, thank you very much.
Publishing and the paper.
And I'll take care of the publication.
Do you want that resolution signed?
Yes, please. Here, I've got some signature pages for you. Here, you can just take, you can just take all of this.
Okay.
It has the clerks and.
The clerk, I'll give the chief's and clerk's.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Hey, we have these.
And I'll leave these up to you all in case anyone wants to come and vote at the application for public hearing. All right, thanks.
Thanks, Tom. If, if Bill, if Bill, Bill and I need to talk to more about it, we'll, we'll, we'll go over.
Absolutely.
I know Daryl, Daryl Duncan's already aware of it because I put a call into him before.
Okay. Very good. Look forward to it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Bill might be at the meeting tonight.
He might be at the meeting tonight. Yeah, he comes, he might be there tonight.
Do we have any other new business?
No.
Okay. Reports from elected officials, is no one out? No. Any reports from media, what's TV? Now, Ed?
This weekend, or actually this, earlier this week, we did attend a training. I'll let Eldon expound upon that because, you know, he's certainly well-versed in what we were doing. I'm happy to receive this training. What I did do during the time that we had afforded as either breaks or lunches or dinners was to meet with individuals that are already in the process or already have a Farmland Preservation Act that is ongoing. Inasmuch as this is going to be on our work session agenda for discussion today, I wanted to find out as much information as I possibly could, and it was all positive that they gave me on this particular act. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Eldon?
You have to excuse me, but I've got a whole list of things. Okay, we had a very nice ceremony last week with naming the Todd May Bridge. I appreciate the commissioner's support on that and it's now the state's bridge.
And welcome to it.
That's it. And the city of Morgantown paid nothing for it, by the way, since we, we got at least one or two councilmen there who like to criticize us all the time, right?
See, that wasn't me. I said.
I, I agree with you though, but.
Well, it's just, you know, tit-for-tat type thing.
Yes.
Maybe we can discuss it more. The only problem is we've discussed it four or five times in the county meetings over the last three or four years, so. Okay, let's move on to a couple of other things. This was an excellent meeting. We had a lot of participation. To have it here in, in Morgantown, it makes it convenient for us, makes it a little bit more difficult for me to get out of other meetings. So I had a couple of meetings yesterday on that. There, there's, there's some good issues. I'm on the legislative committee as well as on the board. The, the big issue, and I think, I, thank you, Ben, you, you wrote a very good article. The, the big issue, and I think, I, thank you, Ben, you, you wrote a very good article to explain why the Nicholas County case affects Nicholas County and only Nicholas County, and there, there's a lot of turmoil because people are reading too much into it, and I, I want to commend the Minion Post for focusing on the actual reality of that local circuit court judge case. We also had, we also had our annual auditors training, which is a required mandatory training, and this was something that both Glenn Gainer and I, as well as Aura Ha- Ash, talked about to the entire group about how we, first as an association and we, as commissioners ourselves, should, what we should do to make sure that people do get the necessary auditor training, that actually attend these meetings. These are mandatory by statute. Now, it might be kind of cruel, but one, one of the suggestions was that we start printing people's names that attended and those commissioners that didn't attend. I think that might be a little bit extreme, and then it might be another violation, but, but I thought I'd go ahead and mention that.
Please note that we were all present.
We were, yeah, we were all present, yes. Thank you, Ed, for making that clear. I wasn't, I wasn't talking about, I wasn't talking about us, I was talking about the others.
I understand.
Yeah, and so, anyway, that's something I wanted to share and put out on that issue. I did get a chance to talk to Senator Manchin a little bit yesterday. I had to apologize for not being able to go. They wanted me to go up to the, to the ballpark and the TIFF. I had, I had a conflict in, in that we had from NACO or the immediate past president of the National Association of Counties, they especially wanted me there to, to talk with him and, and listen to his presentation. So I apologized to Senator Man- Manchin. I changed to stay with the county commissioners, and I'm sure that Tom took care of whatever was, was necessary. I did how, I, I did talk to him also about the work that we have done on UmrA and the locks, that I've been previously authorized to, to represent and work by the commission or for the commission on this project. Part of that project is continued into economic development and recreation on the river. We're looking at expansion of that. Senator Manchin assured me that his office would provide any support and effort to continue that, and assuming the commission continues my authorization to continue to work on this, I will, will go a step further, start developing the development of economic and recreational growth on the river, all from its source, all, all the way to, to Pennsylvania and beyond. I've also talked to the governor's office, and they are, want to be an active participant in that as well. So I, I thank both Senator Manchin and Governor Earl Ray Tomlin for, for their commitment to help us with economic development. Now, along in same line, I'm going to ask the commission for further authority. The National Association of Counties, the, the immediate past president Ricky Hokama, who's the county commissioner from Maui County, Hawaii, asked me to attend and be there for the county, coal county initiatives. The last one's going to be held in October in Charleston, dealing with economic development. He thought it would be, my insight would be important to be there, so if it's all right with the commission, I would, I would attend, I would attend that.
I hope to attend that as well.
Great, good.
Not me.
Also, also, along that same line, Amelia Estratt, if I pronounced her name right, is the research director, and she was very impressed both with West Virginia, but in particular the things that we're doing in Monogaya County, and the effectiveness that we have shown in the state of West Virginia, and thought that, she was trying to recruit, well, she was recruiting me to, to join the, to accept an appointment to the Community Economic and Work for Development Committee. That's a major policy committee for the National Association of Counties. This committee is responsible for all matters pertaining to housing, community, and economic development, public works and workforce development, including the creation of affordable housing and housing options for different populations, residential, commercial, and industrial development and building and housing codes. This would take, for the one better word, take my show to, to Washington on, on the federal level as well. I, I would require an appointment by the County Commissioners Association, but before I would, would accept anything like that, I would need and would ask for the authorization of this commission to, to serve on that committee for National Association of Counties. That supports the 3,600, 3,069 other counties in federal legislation, from everything from PILP financing to TIFF financing to, to, to economic development and projects that can be supported at the federal level. So I would, I would require this commission to authorize that before I could, as I told her, before I could accept any appointment to that.
I have no problem with it.
Do you need a formal, if we're, if we're on tape, we both agree-
Yeah.
-that we're just making the recommendation for you?
If possible, if my schedule allows, I'd also like to attend.
Oh, yeah, you'd be, be welcome to attend. Yeah, anyone's welcome to attend. They'd just like me to be an active member of the committee.
Sure. That's fine.
Okay. That's all I have. I thank you.
Again, more positive news. I have two issues very similar to what you were just talking about. First of all, yesterday, I was fortunate to get away, and I spent a half-day with Senator Manchin touring the baseball park and then at the meet and greet, which I thought was quite interesting. I mean, I was shocked how many people were there and, and the issues that were brought up, but I do want to thank not only Ben, but, you know, I see Nick's still here. I want to thank you, because, and I have it here, Senator Manchin applauds Monogaya County Ballpark, but at the end, it's what you said that I really appreciated, I think that the commission would also appreciate it. Manchin credited the good teamwork between the various government entities as what led to the development out in that area, and I thought you did an excellent article, and, and you caught exactly what the three of us are wanting to do, and that's working with the partnership and working together. So I thank you. I also want to say that he personally, in front of everyone, really, and I use the word loud, at our commission about how strong we are, how we're basically the blueprint of what he likes to see and the direction, and he was thrilled. So he was, he was extremely happy with what was going on, not only with the baseball park, but what we used it as to get the other areas to come in. Which brings up to the second issue that I can say, Matchwire did mention this on the radio this morning, but it was, we were, received a phone call several days ago, the commissioners are aware of, that US Today announced that, that they were having a press release today that we're still waiting to see, and an article that will be coming out today stating that the Monogaya County Baseball Park was voted the number-one national baseball park for short season in the country. So we were voted number one, and what they basically used was our design plan, our partners working together, and just how we funded. It was just a very positive article about the professional baseball park, even though they did interview WVU and, and the Black Bears, it wasn't, had nothing to do, and I want it real clear, with WVU. It had to deal with the community and working with private entities and the other government facilities. So I'm ecstatic, I think it's a great honor, and why I said that is I just texted that to Jason Donahue, who is at a economic development program as we speak right now, promoting our area, and he is now able to use that when they said, well, what sort of national recognition and what sort of, you know, positive statements are you getting through out the country? And this just makes it a lot easier for him to hopefully open up more of those businesses and headquarters.
If I, if I could add to that, because I figured you were going to make the announcement, but I, I wasn't going to make anything until you did. Indianapolis was excited too from Oliver Luck.
Oh, really?
He, he emailed me and texted me and said, "The plan's working, the plan's working. I know we're going forward, the plan's working." So I thought I'd share that too, that they're, they're excited in NCAA as well.
Well, and to put a twist on everything, the man who interviewed me said, "Oh, by the way, I'm a WVU alumni," and he runs the Austin, Texas, what, the Alumni Association. So he was ecstatic to be able to do this article. So he was very pleased. So again, congratulations to, and, and Bobby isn't here, and Jimmy, I think everyone in the administration needs, you know, the credit for what, what we've accomplished, and the community has really bought into it, and I just look forward to future great endeavors with the Black Bears, with the university, and with the community. So I, I thank you very much. Is there any other issues? If not-
Tonight's our meeting.
Tonight's our meeting at six, six o'clock, and then 6:30 is the meeting. And we do have a couple neat things on the agenda that I think we're, we're going to be promoting, the GIS and also-
Extension of the mountain line.
The ex- you're talking about the mountain line.
Although Dave Ruffey can't be there, but we have the maps that he presented.
So we can explain it, okay.
I, I would just like to echo that, that what we do is not possible without the support of our county administrator, assistant county administrator, and all the other staff that works for us. So I definitely thank you for your support.
And, and it was-
Indeed.
Yeah, and I, and I can't say enough, we had a number of other county commissioners who were at that, who heard Senator Manchin loud us, and also, they kept asking, well, what did you do differently that we're not able to do to get his ear? And I just said, "We work really hard together and we're consistent." So I, I really appreciate that for the, on behalf of all three of us. So at this time, I ask for motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's probably moved in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.